The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its
So I apologize for still being a little hoarse. I'll try not to talk too much tonight. We'll move on to the report of Department -- oops, we'll move on to roll call.
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Sebnek. Alderman Eisenach. Alderman Hammond. Alderman Tom -- Alderman Lewis. Alderman Tom Garde. Alderman Ted Garde. All at present.
Thank you. The first item is a public hearing. It's regarding the proposed resolution authorizing public improvements and loving special assessments on Kenwood Drive for storm sewer construction. Director Youngworth, did you want to do this, or Deputy Director Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. What we have here is the public hearing for special assessment for storm sewer along Kenwood Drive. Kenwood Drive currently drains all to the south end from Midway Road, and there is currently no storm sewer on that street. The lack of storm sewer is causing the road to fail at the end of the street, and we're looking to install storm sewer to correct that problem.
Is there anyone who wants to speak regarding the storm sewer construction on Kenwood Drive? Can you just come up to the front and say your name and your address for us?
Jason Lipsky. 2000 Ashland Street in Oshkosh. And I own 1487 Kenwood Drive on this street. I guess it came up pretty quick. I just got a notice about it just last week or the week before or so, and it looks like there's equipment kind of already down on the street, like they're starting. Not really sure what my question is, other than the whole thing has come up pretty fast, and I got an assessment for $21,000 that certainly caught me by surprise. So I'm not really sure what else to say, other than it didn't seem like a whole lot of notice or really much of anything.
So we don't normally do question and answer here. We'll gather all the questions first, and then we'll go back through and hit some answers on all of those as well. Timeline and amount is basically your questions and how it can get paid.
Yes, I guess amongst other things, the whole thing kind of caught me by surprise. I'm still formulating what my questions actually are going to be. And I do know while one of the other building owners is on his way in, he ought to be rolling into just about a minute or so here also.
Okay.
He's got some of the same questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I think it'll clarify some of that. What you see out there right now as far as construction equipment that is for the water main that Fox Crossing is replacing, it's not related to this assessment. So just to clarify. Good question.
Is there anyone else here about this, if you want to?
My name is Brad Searing, and I am representing three of the parcels, TGB Investments being one of them, Kenwood Center Two being one of the parcels, and Kenneth Searing, my father. Three of the parcels affected by this easement and storm sewer. We just have some -- I have some proposed changes to the parcels that are being credited for the use of the easement. So I'm interested in changing one parcel for another and talking about the assessment values we give for each of those parcels.
If you want to state those, we definitely can take notes out. We will be discussing this later in the meeting, and then we could make those decisions.
Is that the best time for me to go through the details?
So either that, or we need to start this whole thing over again after tonight. Everything is complete on our agenda. So if we don't finalize this tonight, then we have to start the whole process over.
No, that's fine. Just later tonight is okay?
No, right now would be best.
Right now, perfect. All right, great. So when we initially spoke, my father and I initially spoke with Cory Gordon from the city. There are three parcels owned by our family members there. And just some background on that, the Kenwood Drive was -- the Kenwood Center office complex was developed by my father back in the '70s and '80s. We added some buildings in the '90s. I wouldn't say it's a misunderstanding, but the understanding was that as one of my father's parcels with the vacant land is providing the space for the easement and providing easement across his property, the understanding was he would be credited for that to not be assessed. And then the other parcel was -- the understanding was, my understanding incorrectly, was that his two parcels, the office building he owns and the vacant parcel would be credited. And I asked, as I'm representing TGB Investments, there is some property there that will be used for catch basins, and I asked that be credited as well. Then if we went further into it, I think the misunderstanding was that Kenwood Center didn't know the ownership was my father. It's an LLC. So that parcel was not credited for the credit against the assessments. I'd like to change that, because it doesn't seem right that the company that I'm representing gets a credit when the person providing the property or the easement doesn't. So the whole concept is I'd like two of his parcels owned by my father or his LLC to receive those credits. And the one from TGB Investments, we're willing to forego that. So we'll pay that when special assessment comes in.
And do you understand what he's talking about, Cory? Okay. So when we get down to that item on the agenda, we'll discuss it. We may go into closed session at that point, and then we'll make a decision as to where we're moving forward.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we're on a public hearing for Kenwood Drive Storm Sewer Special Assessments. I don't know if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on that this evening? Jason is the person that -- okay. Button on the microphone there in the middle? Perfect.
My name is Drew Ricks. I own the property at 1486, 1476, and 1477 on Kenwood Drive. And this last week, I got a lovely bill that said you were going to do a storm sewer in there, and it was only going to cost me about $72,000. So I guess I was curious as to what prompted the need of a storm sewer now, since it hasn't been there for 50 years?
And we can go over all the questions that you have once we're done. We don't normally do a question and answer, but do you have anything else other than that? Okay. So I'll have Deputy Director Gordon again share the reasons why we are looking at doing the project. If you have any information about the timeline, about when we sent out notices and how that worked, and then also how the special assessment process works and the deferred assessment on projects like this as well. We could do it right now. Cory, could you again share why we're doing the project? He came in a little bit late.
Okay.
And then as well as, I don't know if you have a timeline of when the assessment notices went out and what that looks like, as well as explaining the special assessment process and the deferred assessment process and how that works.
Yes. So the reason for the storm sewer is there's never been storm sewer within this project. The project currently drains from Midway Road to the south end. I believe there's roughly five feet of elevation change from Midway Road to the end. Last year, I believe, we went in because the pavement was all broke up, completely deteriorated. We went in, we patched the cul-de-sac. There's vehicles that park in the end of the cul-de-sac for, I think it's an assisted living facility at the end. There's times that there's four to six inches of water at the end of this cul-de-sac because it doesn't drain away. In the wintertime, that turns to ice, it gets broke up, you know, and so on and so forth. So we feel that this is something that potentially should have been done when the road was put in originally, and/or there was a number of changes to this area over a period of time. There used to be an east-west road at the end of this street in the cul-de-sac. That was vacated. I apologize, I forget the exact timeframe. I'm going to say the late '90s, maybe 2000, 2001 timeframe, somewhere in that range. You know, at that time, that's when the final cul-de-sac was built at the end of the street, and there's not been drainage ever since. Because this street does not hit storm sewer, we believe that it is an assessable project. It does meet our ordinance from that standpoint. So that's why we are bringing this forward as an assessable project. As far as the assessment, if this were to pass today, from today's date, there would be a five-year deferral. No payments required within that five years, and then an additional five years where one fifth of the remaining balance would be added to the taxes, I believe, and then interest would incur on that second five-year period. If it's paid off in the first five years, there's no interest incurred on that cost. These are estimated costs based on projects in the area currently that have been bid. There is a contingency factor into the estimate on these costs. I hope they come down. I can't tell you that they will, but I feel they're conservative numbers.
With that, is there anyone else in the audience that still has questions? I need you to come up to the front, though, and use the microphone, please.
My name is Jason Helling. Quick question on, is that the care facility contributing into any of this?
I'm not sure. Do you know, Cory?
Because, I mean, they're pretty much the ones that use the road mainly.
Yes. So the Prairie, I believe it's Prairie Homes Elder Services on the southwest side of the cul-de-sac, that property is also being assessed because they have frontage on the project. Part of this project would be repaving the road because the road is already existing per our ordinance. That would not be assessed. This would just be for the storm sewer pipe.
Jason, could we get your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm actually in Nina. I'm a real estate agent representing.
Okay, that's fine, but we still need to put in the minutes that you were here.
Yep. Spur Road Drive, I-42 Spur Road Drive.
Was it Helling?
What's that?
Your last name?
H-E-L-L-I-N-G.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for that topic? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the second public hearing regarding vacating a portion of Barlow Street. Director Schrader, do you want to comment on that before we start?
I certainly can. Thank you, Mayor. So what is basically in front of us today? This is accompanied with the certified survey map for Broad Street, Barlow, and Water Street. That is on the agenda from the May -- or excuse me, the March 5 Plan Commission meeting. So part of that certified survey map is requesting the vacation of a portion of Barlow Street. This survey and vacation did come back through the Common Council back in 2020. At that time, it was approved. However, we were kind of looking at -- we didn't know exactly how we were going to rebuild Water Street and Barlow Street. So now that this has kind of come back up, we did look at revising that vacation. So previously, we just vacated a small portion to allow for a garage encroachment to kind of vacate out of the right-of-way, but we held a utility and pedestrian easement within that property. So what this does is it basically realigns the property line parallel to the back of the curb, the proposed curb for the reconstruction of Water and Barlow Street. And we believe there's just over eight feet of distance between the right-of-way line and the back of curb. So if we ever needed to do pedestrian facilities in there in the future, we would still have that capacity to do that. So again, this is accompanying the survey that did go through City Plan Commission as well as the Board of Public Works. We have reviewed and approved those from that end, and would be looking to get an approval this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for that item this evening? Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close and move on to reported department heads, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes in communications this evening. Alderman Sebnek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive the minutes of A through G and Communications H through I.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion, a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion?
Yeah, there was one small change under the planning commission, and the date is 3/5/24.
Alderman Garde?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Sebnek, I think communications go through the letter L. You said I.
I want to take J-T and L later.
Okay.
No, you're correct. It's still I. I've done that once before.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as long as the clerk has that, she's got her. Thank you.
Well, I would like to look at Communications I, the new payroll clerk. I know all three of them are in attendance tonight. Kate's hiding over there, but she's retiring in June, and I want to thank her for her support. 23 years, same position, speaks volume of her commitment to the City of Manassia, and it speaks volume for the employer of Manassia to keep people still grounded and interested and staying with us. So I appreciate Kate's 23 years of service and welcome, is it Ally, to the new position. Thank you.
Stand up.
You're right, you need to stand up too, Kate. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. There was -- we all arrived to a sheet of paper at our seats related to Board of Canvasser Minutes. Could someone provide an explanation for this arrival at our seats today?
So when we went through the Board of Canvas Minutes back on April 4, 2024, there was four districts, five and seven. They were split three ways, and when we were writing the report, as you see, that we only encompassed the first wards, 10 and 19. It did not encompass the other two district, like supplemental wards. So we just went ahead and included that to rectify and correct it. But the overall totals were correct. So, and I already had the Board of Canvassers review and approve those revisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any item of concern to the agenda? Any item of concern to the city?
Absolutely. Hello. My name is Chad Lewis. I'm at 1032 Grove Street, and for full transparency, I was also the campaign manager for the Rebecca Nichols for Mayor campaign. I'd like to start off by congratulating Mayor-elect Hammond, very soon-to-be Mayor Hammond, very shortly here, on his win. I'd also like to congratulate Alderman Repella and Alderman Eisenach on their reelection victories. And a final congratulation to Alderman-elect Perkins and Alderman-elect Marshall on their new roles coming up here again very shortly. Having said that, I do have a matter discussed of concern to the city, and that is the April 2 election itself. My concerns are not with the ballot casting and counting. The volunteer poll workers that perform these jobs did a remarkable job once again on April 2 despite having a major snowstorm. No. My concern is around the reporting and posting of the election results that night. There was incorrect information, mistakes, and various issues around the number reporting that caused confusion, and there's still some source of this confusion to the community today. I can cite at least three specific examples. One, election observers at the Boys and Girls Club, which is districts three and four, were given incomplete final results shortly after the election when it was completed. Two, election observers at UWO Fox Valley were also given incorrect results in the mayor's race. And three, finally, what I feel is the biggest issue with this election report was that there was an election report published by the city and sent to at least 28 recipients, including media outlets and other organizations on Tuesday night. This report had the mayor's race results incorrect for the senior center location, wards one through four. This report caused a news agency to release a correction to the actual correct results and then have to retract their correction and explain the city's report was actually incorrect. We made attempts to inform the city clerk and the mayor on Tuesday evening, but the corrected results were not published until Wednesday mid-morning. In each case, the correction was in favor of the count toward Mayor-elect Hammond. Again, I have every reason to believe that the corrected votes are accurate. However, it does not take much imagination to think that multiple issues like this could be used by the losing side to bring the entire election into question. Obviously, that is not what I have done nor what I intend to do. However, in a little over six months from now, we are going to have what is likely to be a very contentious national election, where we are going to see two to three times the number of voters on April -- two to three times the number of voters than we saw on April 2. Given that Wisconsin is a swing state, we could very well determine the presidential election, and I urge the highest care and caution when tabulating and reporting the election results. Even if it requires additional time and verification, initial accurate numbers that take a bit longer are much better than hasty inaccurate numbers that must be corrected later. Reporting discrepancies like this could and would likely be seized upon by a national campaign and bring problematic national attention to and publicity to Manassia. This is a scenario we none of us want. I urge the future mayor and the entire council to investigate the issues that occurred on April 2 election and ensure the processes and procedures are in place to prevent such an issue from recurring again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The first item is the minutes to approve from the Common Council. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sebnek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the common council minutes of 4:01 of 24.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item two is a Board of Public Works recommendation. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sebnek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to make a payment to Faith Technology Incorporated, the 2023-07 Public Works Facility Solar Expansion Project in the amount of $44,768.13. This is the second payment.
I'll second.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Do you have a discussion, Stan?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I'd ask for your unanimous consent to hear from the Director of Public Works and give us an update. I know that two weeks ago, we still weren't online because we're still holding out for -- go ahead. Additional follow-up.
Yes, so we did reach out to -- it's still in the review process for the tax incentive reimbursement. So the system is more or less complete. We're just waiting for the approval for the tax incentives so that we can capture that funding, that significant amount of funding. And that has to be done prior to the system being brought out.
That's what I wanted to emphasize exactly to the public, is that we are not online with it yet because we can't actually flick the switch in layman's terms because we're looking for those grant dollars. And once we get those grant dollars, then we're able to get that grant money.
Exactly.
So, all righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Sorry, I forgot that yours wasn't automatically on. Item four -- no, item three is a street use application. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sebnek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the street use application for the Manassia-Nina Memorial Day Parade, which is this coming -- or which is on Monday, May 27, 2024, 8:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., and this is put on by the Twin City Veterans.
I'll second that.
So motion, a second. Any discussion? Did you have a discussion, Stan?
Yes. There is also a ceremony earlier at 8 o'clock, I believe, down by the columns that goes on every Memorial Day. It's a beautiful ceremony. I know most of the aldermen attend that. I would love for the public to come to see that. It's to honor our veterans, and there's a wreath laying in the canal and the -- I don't know if it's the Manassia Band this year or the Nina Band often plays. It's a beautiful ceremony, and I --
St. Mary's.
Oh, this year it'll be St. Mary's. Great. So it's really a beautiful ceremony, and we'll have the public come to this.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item four is the Plan Commission recommendations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Garde?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to bring forward the certified survey map for the lot line adjustments of 101 Broad Street, number 200174-00, 103 Broad Street, 2-00175-00, 105 Broad Street, 2-00176-00, and 100 Water Street, 2-00173-00, with the following condition, that the right-of-way vacation is approved by resolution by the Common Council prior to the recording of the certified survey map.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second by Alderman Nichols? Oh, sorry. Came from the same direction. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 5 is also a Plan Commission Recommendation. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. It's recommended that the council approve the Certified Survey Map as presented for Lot Line Adjustments of 516 DePere Street, parcel number 400040-00, and 628 Fifth Street, parcel number 4-0067-00.
Is there a second? So motion a second by Alderman Eisenach to approve the CSM. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of March 29 through April 11, 2024, in the amount of $3,649,822.78.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion a second by Alderman Hammond. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 2 is a Class B fermented malt liquid beverage license. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move for the approval of the Class B fermented malt beverage license application for Manassha Athletic Association, Thomas Knetzke as the agent, and the Coslo Park concession stand, May 1, 2024 through October 31, 2024.
There's a motion a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 3 is a storm sewer easement, and... Alderman Sevnik?
Before we make a motion, the public had a few questions. I would like some of that to be answered that may not have been. There were issues with the credit with different lots, one pertaining to the LLC and then the PJ Investments. Drew brought up why after 50 years, I think that was kind of addressed, but maybe there's more to that. Jason is still here. I wanted to put it in layman's terms about the deferred assessment because I think he was over there and I watched you guys were talking amongst each other and probably didn't catch this, but something that's unique in the city of Manassha that Appleton doesn't have, or Nina, we have a thing called the deferred assessment, where if this was put in Appleton, you'd have to pay it right away. In Manassha, we created this program to help especially developers or development. And what that would do is give you five years instead of one year to pay this off. But we even have it go further than that. We'll extend it another five years, but you would have to pay the interest because, you know, we're borrowing for that project to get put in, and I don't know what that interest amount is, but it's, you know, it's minimal compared to when you go to a bank. So I wanted to explain that so that you understood that well, and I would ask for unanimous consent to hear from Cory to follow up on the purposes and those questions that you asked.
Oh, thank you, Alderman Sevnik. To touch on what Brad had brought up with TGB Investments, when we originally spoke, the easements all within the property that is owned by Ken, and that's where we requested. When that negotiation started, I had offered to him that we would forego the assessment on that parcel for allowing that easement down that, through that property. At that point, we had a discussion about including the property across the street as part of that negotiation, and that's what we brought forward. I did have a conversation with Brad two weeks ago, I believe, regarding could we switch the TGB property for the Kenwood Center 2 property. At that time, I told him that I couldn't because of the assessment notices were sent out and that tonight would be the time, that would be your decision to allow that or, you know, amend that report, that I wouldn't be able to make that.
He had mentioned a vacant, he mentioned Ken's vacant lot.
Ken's vacant lot is the one that we are asking to acquire the easement on. That is the only parcel that...
And I think what his question was is can we switch that?
He wants to switch the credit for TGB property to Kenwood Center 2. So what we had previously approved or agreed to was crediting the front footage of the vacant property and the front footage of the TGB property. The front footage of the TGB property is 152.99 feet. The Kenwood Center 2 is 210.65 feet.
So quite a difference.
It wouldn't necessarily be crediting all of the frontage.
Oh, gotcha. So where are we at this point? I mean, I've noticed that the mayor has placed on the agenda a possibility of moving into closed session to discuss this. Is this what we would be discussing?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm just concerned because then would we have to send out new information for a public hearing?
It would not, it would not change the individual properties per foot price. So when the cost share of the properties was broke down, it included all of the properties, including Ken's vacant property, including the TGB property. It included every parcel that had frontaged on that street. We then took the overall project estimate, divided it by the total footage of the project. I believe it's roughly just shy of 1,500 feet, and that's where we came up with the price per foot. That cost would then be the city's cost for acquiring that easement. We're not putting that cost of acquiring that easement back on the other properties. So it wouldn't change anyone's assessment and, other than the TGB and the Kenwood Center 2, and I believe you have the ability as the council to make those adjustments if you would desire that.
I mean, do you, Mayor, are you recommending we go into closed session, meet in the back for a second?
If we want to make, if we want to talk about any changes, I would recommend we go into closed session. If we want to continue as originally in the packet, then we could take a vote on this at this point. But if you want to discuss any of the changes and what the ramifications might be in the strategy for making those changes, I would suggest we go into closed session.
What is staff's recommendation? Going in, go into closed session?
We, the reason we left it like this is because we're going to have to go into a different room and come back, whether we do it here or we do it at a different point.
Right.
So that's why we left them kind of in order on the agenda, because we're going to want to record the signed eye portion of the meeting.
Yeah, I would rather that we go do this now, right?
That's what we recommend, yeah.
So at this time, Mayor, then, I'd like for us to go into closed session, pursuit to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent 1, parent E, and parent G, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and/or conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategies to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved. This is again for the storm sewer easement, parcel number 4-00783-05, from Kenwood Drive to Parkside Drive.
So motion a second?
And before we go into closed session, so the public understands, we're going to go into another room for like a few minutes to discuss what we might need to do, and then we will come back.
And we need a roll call vote, please?
Roll call.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Sevnik?
Aye.
Alderman Eisenach?
Aye.
Alderman Hammond?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady? Alderman Ted Grady? All right. Closed session.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Before we begin here, we do need a motion to return to open session that I should have taken in the other room. Is there anyone that wishes to make that motion? It's a motion by Alderman Hammond, a second by Alderman Grady, to return to open session.
Sorry, Mayor.
And I don't think we need a roll call on that, right? All those in favor? Any opposed? We are now back in open session. Alderman Sevnik?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We just had a closed meeting and we had a short conversation about some recommendations and what is in the best interest of the community, and so we will be moving down then to item 4.
Nope, we still need to approve the storm sewer easement.
Okay, so, all right, a move for the storm sewer easement through parcel number... Do I need to read the parcel number? Yes. Number 4-00783-05, from the Kenwood Drive to Parkside Drive.
Is there a second? So motion a second to approve the storm sewer easement. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for the Kenwood Drive Assessment Report? Alderman Sevnik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like for us to make a motion for the Kenwood Drive Assessment Report, and then I'd like to offer an amendment.
Is there a second? So motion a second by Alderman Sevnik and Alderman Repella, and then go forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add an amendment, and that would move to approve the Kenwood Drive Assessment reopen, the, with assessing 1467 Kenwood Drive, which is parcel 4-00783-06, and removing the frontage from 1466 Kenwood Drive, parcel 4-00783-12.
Is there a second? It's a motion a second by Alderman Repella. So this is just swapping two parcels that would get credit based upon us being granted an easement through the property. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote?
Motion carries eight zero.
And then we would need a motion as amended, we have a motion as amended. Does anyone have other discussion? Did you have other discussion, Stan? No? So if there's no other discussion on the motion as amended, then we would take a roll call vote on the motion as amended as well. Randy?
Motion carries eight zero.
We'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item 1 is Resolution 7. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevnik?
So in a way, we are doing the same thing, but then it would be, I would be offering the same amendment. So at this time, I'd like for us to approve R-7-24. This resolution authorized public improvement and levying special assessments against benefited properties. This is the Kenwood Drive, parcel number 4-00783-10, and 4-001783-15, and 4-0078311, 4, also 4-00783-16, also 4-00783-12, again 4-00783-06, continuing with 4-00783-05, and 4-0078-14 for the storm sewer construction introduced by Mayor Merks.
Sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Gotcha. Got it. It's on file.
So there's a motion a second, and would you like to make an amendment?
Yes, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to offer the amendment the same as I made prior, which is to move to approve the Kenwood Drive Assessment reopen, assessing 1467 Kenwood Drive. This is parcel 4-00783-06, and removing the assessable frontage from 1466 Kenwood Drive, parcel 4-00783-12.
Is there a second? There's a motion a second on the amendment. Is there discussion on the amendment? Seeing no discussion on the amendment, if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment, on the motion as amended? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 2 is Resolution 8. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve Resolution 8-24, a resolution approving an affordable housing extension through tax increment District Number 4, as introduced by Mayor Merks.
Is there a second? So motion a second by Alderman Hammond. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries...
There we go.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is resolution nine. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve resolution nine twenty-four, a resolution terminating tax increment district number four as introduced by Mayor Merkis.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Alderman Nichols and a second by Alderman Hammond. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Get there eventually.
Motion carries eight zero.
By the time we get to the end of the agenda, I'll get used to this. Item four is resolution ten. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is the last motion in my political career, so I'd like to bring, bring forward resolution R ten twenty, twenty-four, a resolution vacating the portion of Barlow Street introduced by myself.
Is there a second? There is a motion, a second by Alderman Eisenberg. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item five is resolution fourteen. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve resolution fourteen twenty-four, a resolution for approving continuing appropriations, and this is related to the 2023 fund balance reservations as introduced by Mayor Merkis.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion, a second by Alderman Hammond. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero. It went off.
Item L is appointments, and at Alderman Sevignac's request, I have no appointments this evening. But I would like to just thank a few board members that have finished their appointment or have moved on at this point. Catherine Kirkshank retired from a plan commission at her last meeting. She was on a plan commission for 27 years, so thank you to her. Rachel Dulling left the park board earlier this year. Dr. Teresa Rudolph left the Board of Health, and I think she was on for like 20, 30 some years. So another very long-serving board member. Gail Pop and Bob Stevens also have left the RDA, and thank them for their service. Arnie Collier, who was an alderman at one point as well, has actually moved out of Manassia, so he had to resign from the housing authority of the Landmarks Commission. Kate Mueller has been a member of the Landmarks Commission for quite a while as well. Kim Massey, also from the Landmarks Commission. Chris Vanderheiden was our library board appointment as the superintendent of Manassia Joint School District. So when he retired from the school district, he also retired from the library board. And Ellen Maximek was on our Board of Review and Board of Appeals. So I want to thank all of them. We'll be sending them a nice letter and a certificate in the mail, and they do great things for the community. It also means that the new mayor has a few spots to fill probably because of that, so you'll be seeing a few other appointments as time goes on. But thank you to everyone who does help our community. And then we have a presentation to, to aldermen that are going to be leaving us this year. The first is Alderman Hammond, and it's kind of, time flies, two years ago when you became a alderman, but I've been very impressed with some of your discussions on sustainability, your desire to learn about new things and work together with the council. So I do have a word to thank you for your service and commitment to helping Manassia grow, and congratulations on your new position. And Alderman Tom Grady, not to be confused with Alderman Ted Grady, has been involved in numerous things on this, with the city for a very long time before he was alderman as well. But he was, I found out he was involved with the fountain on Teco Street at one point. I still have a drawing of a proposed mural that was supposed to be on the side of the building at 163 Main Street. He's been active on the Landmarks Commission, involved in a lot of different things that go on through the community. You're kind of our eye for artistic well-being of the community, which sometimes doesn't go as well as we've planned, but we've have, have a lot of success stories because of the things that you've done. You've helped us with the landscaping at the end of the Racine Street Bridge, which was beautiful as well. So we thank you for your service as being an alderman, but also all the other cool things that you've done for the community as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That was very kind and overstated, I think, but the trajectories in our life's journey take us into various worlds, and I must admit, this is a world I never thought I'd be in. But I'm glad for the six years of education and experience that I went through with this. I leave here with a total respect and praise for the mayor, the staff, and department heads for their contemporary vision, which are bringing Manassia into its own. And to my colleagues here on the council, it's been a joy working collaboratively with you, especially these last two years. Now entering a new cycle, I hope you can maintain and continue to respect and collaborate with each other, creating an even better your place on the water. One thing I will miss is roll call when Val goes Alderman Tom Grady signing off.
Considering I didn't give Alderman Hammond a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to share that it's genuinely been an honor to serve on the common councils and aldermen. I've enjoyed working with the department heads and staff, and I'm excited for this new chapter to work with you all more. Thank you to all of my colleagues for the opportunities to collaborate and really look at the big picture, how we can serve the city well, to lead for tomorrow, create the vision of your place in the water. Thank you, Mayor Merkis, for everything you have done, and I just, yeah, I can't thank all of you enough.
I was waiting for you guys to be ready, but, so, as you know, this is my final evening after 16 years, and we've asked the council president and the mayor-elect to present the plaque to the mayor tonight.
Well, first of all, Randy wanted me to give you a birthday cookie.
Thank you. Is it peanut butter?
I think it is.
I like peanut butter.
We have a plaque here that we're going to present to the mayor, and it says, "Thank you for your leadership, service, and devotion to Manassia. Your vision has bettered our community and helped Manassia achieve new validity." And there's so many, there's so much truth to that, and I don't want to give you this yet. Because I want to tell you why I believe he has earned it. He earned much more than this. You go through 16 years as a mayor, the hardships that you must go through, that, you know, whether you realize it or not, especially in the day of social media, it gets to be a little rough, and the mayor's handled that very well. I've teased him many times, saying, "You've had a honeymoon situation over your 16 years." Because if you watch YouTube, you watch other communities, they're at each other's throats. As you saw tonight, this council, especially this current council, works extremely well together, and a lot of, a lot of that is because of the leadership of our mayor. So Mayor, on a personal note, I always think of this, the real, the very first time I met you, it was at, and some of you may not remember, these used to be called Out of Grunskey Days, and they were held out either downtown here or at Jefferson Park. Not to be confused with Grunskey Runsky, but it was the Out of Grunskey Festival, which I was involved with for 25 years. And we were, we had, we were making burgers, obviously, and one of our grills went out, and Don volunteered to give us his grill from his house, but he didn't know how to get there. And Dorothy Dorshak, which is a good friend of both of ours, said, "There's this, this guy, Don something, that says he'll let us use his grill, but can we use your truck stand?" So you and I jumped in the truck and went to your house on the island and picked that up. And I don't know why, but that was like, you know, I really, we got to talking, and he was like, "Oh, wow, you're an alderman?" Well, look at, he's the mayor now, you know? So also too, our involvement with the Doty Island Development Council. People hate when I say this, but I'm a founding member, and I'm proud of that. And Don had issues with DIDC, and I told Carol Briggs, "Invite him. Invite him, get him involved with us." And he did, and you know what? He became president of DIDC, and he did a darn good job for Doty Island.
It was a demotion from, I mean, a demotion from treasurer, actually, which was a lot of work.
So, you know, it, this is a big step for, you know, most kids at the high school never known another mayor. You know, it's 16 years. I wonder if they know who the new mayor is yet, you know? It's, it's amazing. But, boy, the changes in Manassia, you have to credit this guy. Everything from our streets, our public works, our parks, our police, our fire, you name it. You can be very proud of the city of Manassia, and I've learned this by being on the council, because sometimes we get a bad name. But you know what? If you're in this seat or in that seat, you know that we actually do better than most of the communities around us for the types of services that we provide and the tax rate that we charge. Some people think that we, our taxes are high. They may be high on the national scale, but the service that we provide is outstanding. It's not just, I'm just not, just talking here. We're certified throughout the state, whether it's our police department, our fire department, we're ranked number one. We're ranked number one. Our water, our water quality, number one. This year, we got number two. Wow! That just shows that we have good water in the city of Manassia. That wasn't always true, and it's because of this guy. So please join me at this moment, because I need to have this. I know Austin wants to say something also, but please, let's give him a standing obation for what he has earned. And here's your flag.
I'm not tipping it back.
No, I want that shade. Go ahead, Austin.
Thank you, common council president. I don't talk especially loud, so this is helpful, so thank you. I would just like to give my sincerest thanks to Mayor Merkis for his remarkable 16 years of service to the city of Manassia. During his tenure as mayor, we have seen great growth. Our finances have moved in a positive direction, and abundance of trees planted, miles of trails added, and so much more. Manassia is much more vibrant and a welcoming place for residents and visitors because of his due diligence to making Manassia the best that it can be. Mayor Merkis sought out collaboration in order to get the best outcomes when tackling some of our toughest challenges and when dreaming up some of our biggest opportunities. His impact on the city was more than the hours put in at City Hall, but how often he was out in the community. Whether riding his bike, supporting one of our many great local businesses, volunteering at an event, or weeding to the point that the title of City Manassia's professional weeder could have been fitting, he, he was always showing up for his community. A quote that comes to mind when I think of Don's leadership is this, "Blessed is he who plants trees under whose shade he may never sit." Mayor, thank you for your years of dedication to the city of Manassia, for cultivating the soil and planting trees, both literally and figuratively, and thank you for thinking of the future and all decisions you made to make your place on the water what it is today.
So before I, oh, I can sit down, it'll be easy. Before I go on to my comments, I did want to note that I did get a letter from Marjane Carpenter yesterday. I don't know how many of you know Marjane. She was the mayor of Nida up until probably 20-ish years ago, and she had a nice little quote in there that said, "Manassia has never looked better." And I was so proud to hear that from Anita Mayer, that Manassia has never looked better, and that she was so happy with our continuous improvement here in the city. So that was really special to me. But I also can't express how grateful I am to have had this opportunity, to be part of a team that has made such a huge impact on Manassia. The last 16 years have been fulfilling beyond anything that I could ever imagine. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, it's not really about me, it's about all of us. And I'm talking about our staff. We have an amazing staff, we have an amazing council, but we also have an amazing community that supports things that are happening here in the city. And Manassia wouldn't be the way it is today without all of your help. So thank all of you as well. During this time, we've taken on that new slogan that you guys talked about, your place on the water, and I think it really has provided a new viewpoint, a new sense of pride in our community. People talk about Manassia as being this cool place on the waterfront, where Manassia used to be a place that had a bunch of factories and a bunch of bars downtown, and now we have this whole new image with our parks, trails, and we've won awards for those things and built partnerships doing all those things. So I'm very proud of our team here at the city, their efforts, their thoughtfulness, their creativity, and they're all at the heart of the services and the image that we have here. We've embraced things like LEED, which is something that I'm really proud the PD has done, and community policing. We've actually built things like the Mill Street, and I should, it'd be nice if I could talk better tonight, the Mill Street veranda at the end of Mill Street with the columns. We actually built that with our own teams. We're building the new shelters at the park right now. We're building the new social space at the park. HR has drastically improved our culture here. We are a good place to work, and people like working here. We maintained a strong COVID response, which was an experience that I don't think any of us would ever want to go through again, but it was amazing to see the health department and all of us kind of spring together into action to try to keep our employees and community safe, as well as still provide those services that were needed. We have outstanding emergency response times with our fire department, and we partner with our neighboring communities to provide good service. Our library, Brian is here, our library's actually embraced technology, which is something that's going to need to happen if we want to continue to have a library, but they didn't throw all the books away either. They can do both. So I think that's really great as well. We've managed our urban forest. We've closed, I think, seven TIFs. We've increased our reserves from some of those dark days when we were down in the four or five percent of what our general fund, how do we say this? It's very technical, but we should be at 15%, and we were down to like 5%. So we've done a really good job getting back to where we should be again, and we've nearly doubled our equalized value in this community since I started as mayor. So that's a really strong potential that we've, we've achieved. So the community passed referendums in some of our dark days to save our electric utility, which still saves us like 35% of our electric bill every month. You've all volunteered to do different things, like Stan kind of described at the beginning. That's how I got involved. That may be how the next person that's sitting up here is involved as well. And you've had faith in the city. The community pride and outreach that we have here in the city is second to none. So I'm looking forward to see what's going to come. We're still going to have a great team, we're going to have a great council, and I'm certain that you'll continue those proud traditions that we've had for the past 150 years, and things will be outstanding. So thank you. And I think, if I can find the right page here, there is a section for public comments, if anyone has public comments at this point. Seeing no one, Alderman Tom Grady, would you, to make the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Turn your mic on, though.
I'm done.
You will be. You will be at that point.
Motion to adjourn into signed I.
Signed I. Is there a second? So motion is second.